So you're free and clear now? We'll wait for Mr. Laban.
All right. I'd like to call to order West Fargo Planning and Zoning Meeting for February 8th, 2022. Second order of business is the approval of the minutes from last month, January 11th meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as published. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Item number three, public hearing. A twenty-two dash two, conditional use permit for off-premise signs in a public facilities district at 535 Thirteenth Avenue West, unplatted parcel of the northeast quarter of Section 18, Township 139 North, Range 49 West, South Elmwood Park, and Lot 1, Block 1 of Elmwood Court, Fourth Edition, City of West Fargo, North Dakota, West Fargo Parks.
Thank you. This application was received in order to allow for two thirty-six square foot non-lighted off-premise signs for baseball field sponsorship at the north and south entrances of Elmwood Park. Under four dash four three-three-point-three, off-site signs may be allowed as conditionally permitted uses in the public facilities district. The city may impose height and other size requirements as well as other requirements deemed necessary by the city to have such signed fit into the area in which they are proposed to be established. A conditional use permit agreement is required to be signed prior to issuance of a building permit and may include conditions deemed appropriate by the commission. With reference for the criteria for granting conditional uses, there were no concerns noted. The proposed signs are non-lighted. Notices were sent to property owners within 350 feet and applicable departments and agencies, and no comments were received. It is recommended that the city approve the proposed application on the basis that with conditions that it could be considered consistent with city plans and ordinances with recommended conditions of approval as follows. Consideration be given to any public comments that may be received, and a signed conditional use permit agreement is received. This is a public hearing. I'm available to answer any questions, as is Barb from the Park District.
Thank you. So it is a public hearing. With that, I'll open up the public comment or questions. And just as a note, if anybody wishes to speak, please come up, state who you are. Any comment from the public? Seeing none, close that section. Commissioners?
I got one question. Is, if they decide they want to put it up as electronic, does the conditional use can be required? Would that change to any other type of sign, or is it solely this sign?
There's a separate conditional use permit process, which would be for any signs that are facing residential districts. So on the south... So on the south side, they would have to come back if they wanted an EMC, Electronic Message Board, or if they were wanted to have the sign lighted. The sign to the north faces North Elmwood Park and the street, so there shouldn't be an issue with that sign because it doesn't face any residential districts.
I also just had a follow-up on that, Lisa, that I saw it in here somewhere. No, I can't find it. That an off-premise sign, if it's approved, that it has to stick with the original purpose for it. So they couldn't at some point not just do a digital, but say, "Oh, we're going to sell advertising here," and, you know, advertise Cheerios or whatever. That it is restricted to the purpose for which they have made this proposal.
It's intended for sponsorship signs. If they wanted to do something for, you know, I suppose, a business, a grocery store, or something like that, that, you know, not an item, but if they wanted to advertise for a business that's sponsoring the baseball fields, that could be included, but they wouldn't be able to have an off-premise electronic message board that would advertise things like, you know, products, so. So the intent is for sponsorship, so.
Right.
And that can change? I mean, if sponsorship could change?
If the intent of the sign, and we can write that into the conditional use permit too, but if the intent of the sign changes, then the conditional use permit is recorded against the property, and so if there's a condition that you want to state that, but...
I mean, the sponsors can change.
The sponsors can change, yes.
If Cheerios wants to sponsor it, they'll push...
That's right, right. If General Mills wants to sponsor, yes.
I'm a Lucky Charms guy myself.
Good to know. But the size of the sign and that effect is not lighted is part of the conditional use. So that is the parameters which were being approved.
Correct.
I would move to approve this presented with two conditions. Second?
It has been moved and seconded to approve the application as submitted with the two conditions. Any further discussion before vote?
Sorry maybe to do this, but just one question. There was some mention about we have the opportunity to limit size or shape or height of the sign. Does, I mean, the proposal looks fine, and I think that's probably all what we're thinking about. Do we need to put any more parameters on that, or are we basically approving this as presented?
I believe we're approving it as presented. If any changes are made, then we would need to come back.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approval with the two conditions?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion passed. Item number four, also a public hearing. A twenty-two dash three, conditional use permit for home occupation firearm sale with customers coming to site at 1677 10th Street West, Lot 61, Block 7 of Elmwood Court, Edition, City of West Fargo, North Dakota, Knutson.
Thank you, Mr. Commission President. The applicant is seeking to operate a federally licensed firearm business out of this home. The business will be by appointment only. Federal agencies regulate the sale, repair, and storage of firearms. According to Section 4 dash 448 of the city ordinances, under supplementary district regulations, provisions for home occupa... It lists provisions for home occupations for which the home-based business would be subject to. Section 4 dash 448 dash point 10 also states that as conditional use, the city may consider a home occupation which has customers coming to the site. It further states that the city may place any conditions on the home occupation as deemed necessary to ensure that it will not be a detriment to the character of the neighborhood. The city has required conditional use permits for home occupations that have customers coming to the home since about 2005. Since that time period, the city has approved two conditional use permits for firearm sales. According to the alcohol, Federal Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms Bureau, there are eight FFL dealers who currently have their businesses registered at residential properties located within West Fargo. The applicant has provided and has no concern meeting the full list of requirements to follow under the provisions for home occupations, and the property is shown to accommodate up to four vehicles for off-site parking spaces, including space in the garage for residential use. Property owners within 350 feet, including applicable agencies and departments, were notified. Out of 64 properties that we notified, we received comments and phone calls from six neighbors in opposition to the proposed conditional use permit. All those in opposition said that they were concerned about the nature of the product being sold. Comments that we received in writing are attached to your packets. We also received a comment from Pierre Freeman, the West Fargo Emergency Manager, who expressed some concern about the safe storage of firearms. His comment is also attached to your packet as well. The application may be considered consistent with the comprehensive plan for the City of West Fargo if it is determined to not be a detriment to the character and visibility of the surrounding neighborhood. Therefore, it is recommended that the city approve the proposed application on the basis that it is consistent with city plans and ordinances with recommended conditions of approval as follows. One, that the applicant meet all requirements set forth in provisions for home occupations found in Section 4 dash 448 of the city ordinances. Two, that the applicant meet all federal and local requirements as they pertain to the sale, repair, and handling of firearms. Three, that adequate parking for both the home occupation and the residence is maintained. And four, that a signed conditional use permit agreement is received. This is a public hearing, and both myself and the applicant are here tonight to answer any questions that anybody, including you, might have.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. I'll open that section.
From me?
Yes?
So I am the applicant. My name is Michael Knutson. I, my plan is with this business. I'm not going to be holding business hours. I'm not going to advertise it in any way. There's not going to be any signage around that at all. As far as the firearm portion go, I take firearm safety very seriously. I have a wife and four kids. Their safety and the safety of my neighbors are a big portion of what I've considered. My plan is to sell to people that I know. And even though I might be selling a firearm to my best friend, there's still paperwork, FBI background checks, and all that that I will be following because at the end of the day, I'm personally responsible for everything that would go through my business. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Knutson. Thank you. Are there any other questions, comments from the public? Seeing none, close that section. Commissioners?
Couple of questions. Number one, are those two other CUPs, are those still active, the other two businesses?
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Okay. And if I recall correctly, wasn't it a stipulation if the property owner moved or sold, that the CUP would then, you know, quit, I guess? They couldn't transfer it on. They couldn't sell the home as, "Hey, you can come here and run a gun business" or anything else. So I didn't hear that in your stipulations there, but I would recommend if this was approved, that that's part of the approval process. So that it's not a marketable commodity that could be sold with a home.
Correct. And I believe in, it was either 2020 or 2021, we made an ordinance change where conditional use permits are tied to the prop... or tied to the applicant or the owner, and no longer to the property because prior to that, if somebody moved out of that home or out of that residence, that business occupation could still be done then under that conditional use permit. That is no longer the case.
Okay, good. And I guess the last question, we don't have anyone from our law enforcement here, but have we had any issues with the others? I haven't heard of anything. Maybe the city attorney knows, but I haven't heard of any problems with the operation of the other two.
As part of our notification process, the police department is notified, and then, you know, Mr. Knutson could correct me if I'm wrong, but I also believe that under some of the regulations that are placed on him, he has to contact our police department. I believe it's within 30 days of starting his business.
I can, from my perspective, I haven't heard of any issues with the other CUPs. There's, just frankly, from the city attorney's position, I'd rather have businesses licensed than unlicensed selling firearms because people are, I know there are people selling firearms in the community unlicensed. For safer people are licensed.
Yeah, according to the numbers you quoted, there's eight licensed dealers in town, and two of them have CUPs, so.
According to a spreadsheet that the ATF has on their website for our area, when I go and put those addresses into our GIS site, there are eight other locations that are resident, residential homes.
So would that suggest that they are operating without approval? What about those other six, then?
It could suggest that either they started their business prior to us requiring conditional use permits in 2005 for home occupations, or it could suggest that they started it sometime after. The ATF spreadsheet that I was looking at doesn't actually have any sort of start date or end date for when those businesses applied for their FFL license.
So what would be the trigger, I mean, do we have to wait for some complaint or something for that to be looked into to make sure that they have done that appropriately and are not grandfathered in, let's say, prior to that requirement?
I am not sure what our process would be for someone who might be grandfathered in prior to that. I'd have to check with the city attorney and probably have some conversations with Erin as well about that.
It does seem to me that it's prudent to follow up and see if these six have the appropriate permission to be having this kind of a business in their home.
I can maybe speak to that a little bit. That's something we could certainly look into, but...
I'm sorry, I'm not hearing you very well.
That's something we can certainly look into and kind of get back to you on if that's something that, you know, the city will be interested in looking into. But for purposes of today's discussion, I'd say we can put a pin in that for now.
Right, that's not for this. And I did want to thank you, Malika. I thought you did a nice job of getting us this background information, and I appreciated how you laid that out, so thank you for that. So there were comments from neighbors who are not in favor of this. How do we weigh those comments? Because we always say, you know, taking the neighborhood feeling into account and that it's not detrimental to the character of the neighborhood, et cetera. So I guess that's for this body to be thinking about, and clearly the recommendation from the staff is to go ahead with it, but we did have those concerns expressed by the neighborhood. And I think at our last approval of one of these, there was the legislative issue and the Fargo zoning ordinance. And since then, we've had this recent court or judge opinion on that. So I'm assuming that the recommendation is coming to us based on our own current ordinance with that prevailing in terms of being able to enforce our own ordinance on the character of the neighborhood and that, so forth, right? So we are so far in alignment with what the judge has ruled about that. So I don't know if any of the rest of you had seen that.
Fargo actually has a, they prohibit it.
Right, and it was...
The legislature tried to change that, Judge.
Well, the judge has said that, Home Rule Charter, so. Yeah, I'm just concerned that we have neighbors who say that this is not appropriate for their neighborhood. So how do we weigh those concerns?
And I, if I can answer that, I would just say that's probably up to you as the commission to make that decision. That's kind of why I kind of gave a little bit of context with how many properties were notified, and then I also provided a map of sort of where those calls or complaints came from, just because I knew that would probably be a question that somebody might ask.
Excellent overview, by the way. I concur with what Commissioner Racco says. Yeah, it's clear. Not 100% of all those that were notified are in support of. Any other questions?
Just a question from Mr. Knutson. As far as the sales interaction with your customers, is that all done indoors? I guess the only thing I always get worried about is you had a gun with a scope. You want to go outside.
No, it has to leave my property with a lock on it.
Right, but you're not showing a product outside your home.
I wouldn't actually have any inventory. This would be someone, tell me what they want. I would order it, and then it would go through me.
That'd be my only concern. You have no intent, but someone could interpret.
My goal is, I don't want this to be known, other than obviously following all the regulations. But my intent for the neighborhood is they will not see guns just leaving my house or anything like that.
Are they going to be cased in and out?
Yes. Yeah, and the ATF is very specific on, you know, what is required. You go to Shields, they can give you a gun just fine. I have to actually have a, they call it a lock that goes in basically the barrel. That has to go out with a gun locked, so.
The requirements for an individual gun sale is different than for a...
Well, it's, maybe I shouldn't say it's a requirement. They recommend it, and I agree with the recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
I do think looking at the requirements, if federally regulated businesses should be running, so it should be scrutinized very well in the application process. We've already vetted through that, I'm assuming.
It's a 400-page document that they spent a good portion of a day going through that with me. And yes, obviously, ATF, FBI, there's a little bit of scrutiny, likely so.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions for Mr. Knutson?
I would move to recommend approval.
Thank you for your time.
If the, how many conditions are there?
There were four. It has been moved and seconded to approve the application with the four conditions noted by staff. Any other questions or discussion before vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
I believe the support is in majority, therefore motion passed. Item number five, this is a public hearing. A twenty-two dash four, Eagle Run Plaza 13th Edition. A retracement plot and conditional use permit to allow for multiple dwellings in a Zone C light commercial zoning district at 3255 6th Street West and 661 32nd Avenue West, Lots 6 and 7, Block 1 of Eagle Run Plaza 9th Edition. City of West Fargo, North Dakota, Graham Yunus? Did I pronounce that right?
Yunus.
Yunus.
Thank you. This application was received in order to combine two existing platted lots into one for sale and development, and a conditional use permit for construction of a mixed-use development containing residential uses, units in a light commercial district. A public hearing is not required for the retracement plat, though the applicant must plat the property according to plating standards, and the plat must be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Commission. In terms of the conditional use permit, the applicant intends to construct a five-story mixed-use building with commercial space along the east side of the building, tuck under garages on the main floor, 44 apartments on the upper levels, which does include, then this requires a public hearing for the conditional use permit. Under the corridor overlay district regulations, there is a higher construction standard, which means this would require the applicant to submit site elevation and building plans to the Planning and Zoning and City Commissions at a later date for approval prior to the issuance of a building permit. With reference to the criteria for granting conditional uses, the following is noted. Ingress and egress to the property and proposed structures thereon with particular reference to automotive and pedestrian safety and convenience, traffic flow and control, and access in case of fire and catastrophe. A pedestrian circulation plan should be included in the proposed development prior to the corridor overlay district review of the site plan in order to provide connectivity with the surrounding area. The property is also within the core retrofit growth area in the comprehensive plan, which encourages more walkable, bikeable corridors, and a better connected village core. Elements for walkable mixed-use ingress and egress include building entrances, fronting building streets and sidewalks, clear and separated pedestrian circulation between entrances and public sidewalks, parking located interior to and/or behind buildings, and a minimum number of driveways. Regarding off-street parking and loading areas where required, consideration should be given to the building placement and moving the building farther to the south. The comprehensive plan encourages parking to be hidden behind buildings in the internal parts of a block. In terms of refuse and service areas, adequate waste collection or dumpster enclosure and locations should be provided as per the sanitation department. Refuse collection areas shall be permitted in rear yards and visually screened from adjoining properties and streets as per the corridor overlay district requirements. In terms of screening and buffering within the criteria for granting a conditional use permit, a buffer yard with screening shall be provided on any side or rear yard with a higher intensity as per the landscape ordinance. Notices were sent to property owners within 350 feet and applicable agencies and departments. The sanitation superintendent commented on specifications for the dumpster location, enclosure, and sizing, which has been added to the site plan. Engineering stated concern with the number of access locations into the development from the street and private access easement. In terms of consistency with the comprehensive plan and other applicable city plans and ordinances, the plan envisions that most mixed-use development would occur within the core retrofit growth sectors, which this proposed development is located in. The requirements to review development within this area of the corridor overlay district could provide oversight by the City Commission for development, which is consistent with West Fargo 2.0. There are a number of items within the Principles of Good Planning and Design section of the plan that relate to design, including walkability, scale, connectivity, and parking, which were mentioned under the criteria for granting a conditional use permit. Due to the nature of a conditional use permit, the City Commission has the authority to impose such conditions it deems necessary to fulfill the purpose and intent of this conditional use permit ordinance and place it in greater alignment with the goals outlined by the comprehensive plan. In terms of staff recommendations, it is recommended that the city approve the retracement plat and the conditional use permit on the basis that it is consistent with city plans and ordinances with recommended conditions of approval as follows. An updated drainage plan is received and approved by the city engineer if necessary. An updated utility plan is received and approved by the city engineer if necessary. A signed final plat is received with necessary easements. An attorney title opinion is received. A certificate is received showing taxes are current. A signed conditional use permit agreement is received. A pedestrian circulation plan be submitted. Development will be required to meet, but will not be limited to the corridor overlay district regulations, the supplementary district regulations, the landscaping standards, off-street parking and loading, and the sign regulations. And finally, residential use is permitted only in conjunction with a ground-floor commercial. This is a public hearing to consider the conditional use permit for allowing multiple dwellings within a light commercial district, and the retracement plat is also under review. The applicant is available to answer any questions, as am I.
Thank you. So we're actually talking about two things. It's the combining the two lots, plots, and then also the conditional use permit for this specific building? Or is this just a preliminary concept?
So we're considering the conditional use, considering the use, the allowing of residential use within a light commercial district as part of the multi-use building. They will have to come back for site plan review as per the corridor overlay district regulations. We did this before with Moss Tequila, Randy's Restaurant, Randy's Diner, the yoga studio, the daycare, because it's written into the ordinance that they require site plan review.
Right, so we're at that concept level?
Correct.
And this is the first idea?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. This is a public hearing. And with that, I'll open it up for public comment and questions.
John Yunus, well, break and answering questions if you guys have.
Okay, what was your name again?
John Yunus.
John Yunus, thank you, Mr. Yunus. Sorry about mispronouncing your name earlier.
I'm used to it.
Seeing no comments from the public, close that section. Commissioners, questions? Concerns? Discussion points?
I would just comment, it looks, you know, as noted, this is a good infill project that seems to fit the nature of the 2.0 plan, and I think we're looking for infill, and there's certainly a need for more housing and more mixed-use properties. So with that said, I'd move to approve with the recommendations noted.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the application for the plat and the conditional use permit concept with the nine recommendations, nine points on the recommendations. Before we go to vote, any other questions or discussion required? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion passed. Public hearing, item number six. A twenty-two dash five, zoning ordinance amendment to Section 4 dash 449 allowing for telecommunications towers within the public facilities district.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So last month, we received an application for a telecommunications tower, and that application is the next agenda item. But in researching for information related to that agenda item, we found that telecommunications towers aren't currently allowed within the P public facilities zone. So after a little bit more research, we found that the wireless telecommunications ordinance was originally adopted by the City of West Fargo in 1997. Telecommunications towers were originally allowed on government, school, and utility sites subject to review and approval as conditional uses. And those uses... And those uses for government, schools, and utility sites sometimes ended up in residentially-zoned property. In two thousand, the P public facilities zoning district was created, and at that time, many school, government, and utility sites were then rezoned as P public facilities. Due to an oversight, the P public facilities district was never added to the list of acceptable zoning districts for the location of wireless telecommunications towers, subject to review and approval as conditional use. This proposed amendment would add P public facilities to the list of acceptable uses, subject to review and approval as a conditional use for telecommunications towers within that district. The proposed amendment does not make any major substantial changes to the existing ordinances and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. We note, put a notice in the newspaper for this amendment, and we also notified city departments, and we received no comments. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed amendment, and I am here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Public hearing, open it up for public comment question? Seeing none, close that section. Commissioners, questions?
So, right now, there are cell towers in the town that aren't in compliance with the ordinance. For instance, the water towers, some of them have equipment on top of them, I believe over the soccer field. So, we'll be cleaning that up as well. That's not, we're not just changing the wording for the next item that's on here, correct?
Correct. It wasn't until the next item that had came up that we actually kind of saw that little flaw in our.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, on those, we, we had done a commission, conditional use permit when they, that was submitted.
They had, but the ordinance changed, right? Is that what you said?
The ordinance cha, so, the public facilities zone was made in two thousand. So, at that time, that was when areas were rezoned to that zoning. So, if there was telecommunications equipment already on those sites prior to the implementation then of that zoning district when it was rezoned, then I would imagine it was probably grandfathered in. I'm not exactly sure how that worked.
It doesn't matter. I'm just saying, we're, we're cleaning up a bigger problem than just doing the next, the next item, I guess is what it.
And it's one word, literally, that is being changed.
Correct.
I would just note, though, that the change, I think, is allowing towers in public facilities on a water tower. The tower is already there, it's just the antenna, which is maybe a nuance, but.
But, but, in this case, so it's gonna go on a light pole, is the light pole stay there, they replaced the light, light? It doesn't matter.
That's the next item.
Right, no, we're splitting here, is what I'm just saying, is, is it truly different? It's good we're cleaning this up, let's put it that way. I don't want to make a mountain out of molehill here. With that, I'd, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the zoning ordinance, section four dash four-four-nine, to allow telecommunications tower within public facilities districts. Any other questions or discussion prior to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Okay. Let's talk towers. Item seven is public hearing. A twenty-two dash six conditional use permit for a telecommunications tower in a public facilities district at eight-hundred-fortieth Avenue East, lot one, block one of Fernburg second addition, city of West Fargo, North Dakota, Powder River LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant is requesting to build a new telecommunications tower located on property leased from the West Fargo Public School District. Site plans show that the proposed tower would be located on a light pole at the high school football field. All, an equipment shelter would also be constructed at the base of the tower, which would also partially be used as a school concession stand. A text amendment to the telecommunications regulations is currently being considered to allow towers within the P public facilities zoning district with conditional use permit. As such, the applicant has provided a site plan which shows the proposed tower being placed on lease space of twenty-five by sixty feet in the middle of the property on the west side of the football field. Telecommunications towers in non-residential districts are limited to a hundred and fifty feet in height, and I believe this one would be a hundred feet plus a ten-foot lightning pole. The telecommunications equipment on top of the tower would also be screened with a equipment shroud. The applicant has, will, will be submitting a letter agreeing to meet reasonable terms and conditions for shared use colocations with other carriers. The applicant has submitted documentation required by the Federal Aviation Administration and the Federal Communications Communication, showing the proposed structure would not affect flight operations of the West Fargo Municipal Airport. The proposed tower is within the corridor overlay district, which is also in place along Veterans Boulevard. A conditional use permit agreement is required to be signed prior to the issuance of a billing permit and may include conditions deemed appropriate by the City Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Property owners within three hundred and fifty feet were notified. We received one phone call from a neighbor who had a question about the location of the tower, as well as concerns about potential health effects of five-G cell towers. And then on Friday, I also received an email from an individual who also had similar concerns about health effects of five-G cell towers. I'll pass it out now for distribution here. West Fargo two-point-oh does not prohibit or encourage the construction of telecommunications towers within West Fargo. The area where the tower will be constructed in is centrally located within a developed school complex. It is recommended that the city approve the proposed application on the basis that it is consistent with city plans and ordinances with recommended conditions of approval as follows: one, that a signed conditional use permit agreement is received; and two, that the passage of the CUP is contingent on approval of text amendment to the P public facilities zoning district. Both myself and the applicant are here tonight and can answer any questions you might have. This is a public hearing.
Thank you. It's a public hearing, so I'll open it up for public comment. Seeing none, close that section. I got a question. Yeah, the, I've only been reading about, you know, the whole FCC and the airlines and this is, I'm, because you mentioned it, I'm assuming this is a five-G tower.
Correct.
So, on that note of the question, and it goes along with this comment, are there guidelines associated with colocation to populations in general?
As far as how far back they can be placed from like a residentially-zoned district? So, from a residential zone district, I'd have to look at the ordinance a little bit more closely, but I believe you have to be placed a certain number of feet back from a residential zone, but it's not due to frequencies or anything like that. It's more due to the fact of if the tower fell over, making sure that if the tower fell over, it wouldn't fall on a house, or something of that nature.
All right, so it just has to do with the structure and the appearance?
Correct.
And what's the conclusion here in terms of the number of feet that if it falls over, it's not going to hit a residential?
Correct. So, if you look on the map here, where the tower is going to be located at, this is the high school football field, this is the track, and then right at the very edge of this, the track and the northwestern corner there, there's a light pole, like a sort of sports arena floodlights, and then the telecommunications equipment would go on top of those floodlights, and then a shroud would go around that, that equipment.
So, they're replacing an existing light tower with a slightly taller one with the lights being on the same structure?
Correct. And adding a concession stand, which will also double as a equipment room.
That's what they, they, that's the little carrot they gave to the public school. No, just hot dogs. I'm, I'm sure they're rated for normal up to a hundred mile an hour winds, seeing it's North Dakota, right? So, did I close the couple, public comments?
You did.
All right. Questions? Discussions? We just changed the ordinance to allow it.
I'd move to approve with the recommendations noted, I forget.
How many were there?
Two recommendations.
A second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the application with the two conditions and the recommendations from staff. Any further discussion prior to vote? Questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Item number eight, public hearing. A twenty-two dash seven, Grant addition, subdivision and rezoning from A agricultural to R-two, limited multiple dwellings, a property located in the northwest quarter of section six, township one thirty-eight north, range forty-nine west, seventy-eight oh-two Fifty-second Avenue West, city of West Fargo, North Dakota, Grant.
All right, good afternoon. Item eight, titled Grant addition, is a request for subdivision and zone change. As noted, the property is located at seventy-eight oh-two Fifty-second Avenue West, which is located within the Wilds neighborhood, on the southwest corner of the city, portion of the city. The applicant is the property owner Kathleen Grant, who is being represented by her attorney Joel Frumstead, who is here tonight. Should you have any questions for the applicant? The overall purpose of these applications is to entitle the subject property for future medium-density residential development. There is no specific development or site plan proposed for the property at this time, as the owner is looking to sell the property for development in the future by the, the future purchaser of the, the property. The property is currently located within the A agricultural zoning district, and the requested zone change is to change the zoning district to R-two, which is limited multiple dwelling residential. The proposed subdivision plat would plat the property into a single lot with a forty-foot accessing utility easement running from access points located on the south, as well as the east portions of the property. The southern access point is provided via public right-of-way for Rachel Drive. I don't know how to see, I can zoom in here. Rachel Drive West is platted on the south side of the subject property here. There is no street currently today, but the public right-of-way is in place. Additionally, on the east portion of the subject property here, this lot fifty-seven in the adjacent subdivision is a city-owned lot, and the intent of that city-owned lot was to provide access, vehicular, so as pedestrian access, as well as utility access, connection to Eleventh Street West, which is just one lot to the east of the subject property. As part of the proposed subdivision, the applicant is requesting a subdivision waiver in order to waive the requirement to include a cul-de-sac turnaround at the terminus of a public street. Rachel Drive West currently terminates at the subject property line, and so typically the subdivision standard would require some type of a public turnaround at the terminus of a public street. However, this is a unique property, being it's kind of the, the last piece of the puzzle in this area, if you will, and so, as outlined in the staff report, staff is in favor of providing this access and utility easement in lieu of a typical platted cul-de-sac turnaround. I would note here that staff is still working with the applicant on some of the details of that access and utility easement, so this is a preliminary plat at this time. The subdivision is subject to public land dedication requirements, and the Park District has requested fee in lieu of land dedication, which would be used to help fund public facilities within the Wilds neighborhood. Staff has received two public comments as a result, as a result of notices sent to adjacent property owners. Concerns were specifically noted in relation to the potential loss of existing trees on the subject property, as well as some apprehension over multiple dwelling housing within the neighborhood. Both of those comments are included in the staff report as attachments. Overall, staff finds the proposal to be consistent with the West Fargo two-point-oh comprehensive plan, specifically as it relates to strengthening neighborhoods and expanding housing choice, including the diversification of housing choice within existing and proposed neighborhoods. So, staff's recommendation is to recommend conditional approval to the City Commission with the conditions noted in the staff report. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. This is a public hearing? Well, I'll open it up for public comment.
I'm no developer. I just work with Ms. Grant. She's in, in ill health. She's been suffering from cancer and has recently had eye surgery in both of her eyes, so she apologizes that she could not be here. This land has been in the family, or parts of this land have been in the family dating back to eighteen sixty-three, I believe. I think they've got the actual homestead grant from Chester Urther. This is not land they would have anticipated wanting to vacate up, up as recently as Kathleen's father. This was land that had been farmed, including a lot of the area around it. Ultimately, in the last handful of years, they've seen their taxes and special assessments go from five thousand or so to over thirty thousand. Basically, as you saw on the, the plat where Rachel Drive is, there's kind of an old barn and an old house that's being held up by, by some trees, and, you know, this ultimately is not something she wants to, to do, but it's really kind of her, her only choice. And so, in, in talking to, you know, developers and others, this is, again, the only choice. We've really appreciated working with the city staff. There's a lot of different city departments and staff you have to go through on these things, so it's been quite a process for me, and we hope you will help Ms. Grant move forward with this, this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question, comments from the public?
Hi, so I live just on the north side of that plot of land, and my only concern is the tree line, right? Is, when we bought the property in twenty-twenty-one.
I'm sorry, just to, if you could, just your name, too?
Oh, sorry, Alec Borwa.
Thank you. And so, you're one of the houses there on the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, on the north side, yep.
Good.
And so, we place a lot of value in that, in that tree line. I'm not too concerned with the multifamily idea, the multi-unit. We already have some on the east side there. I'm more concerned that the tree line is going to come down, and I would strongly recommend that you take that into consideration. It would reduce the property values for that, those, those properties right there, and I think I saw my assessed value go right to the sale price, and so I would say that that would probably have to come down if, if our tree line came down as well. So, just something I'd consider when, when you guys are making your decision.
Okay, so you're speaking about the trees on this property?
Yes. Thank you.
If I can just briefly, I actually, I've been out to the Grant property many times. I was out there this afternoon, because I knew that there were some of these comments about the trees. I think a lot of those trees are probably as old as the, the land grant originally. So, I, I don't know that there's any certainty that any trees can or can't stay, even if the grants remain. Like I said, literally, the one house that's not occupied is being held up by the trees, and there's a lot of just other dead trees and other things. But certainly, at this point, there's no intention to do anything one way or the other, but, you know, I don't think anyone can make any promises about it, given the health and age of some of those trees.
Fair.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just like to note for the record that nothing would prohibit the current owner from demolishing all the trees right now anyways. And so, it's always something that we run into, people buy land with something that's next to them that they really like. Unless you own that land, you can't really, you know, the current owner could just go out of the bulldozer to demolish all the trees. So, I just want to make that clear that that could happen right now without any action by the city.
Thank you for the clarification. Are there any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll close that section. Commissioners?
I wonder, Aaron, if you would tell us a little bit more about, there's a bullet point in the staff report about the Park District requesting fee in lieu of parkland dedication and the fee going to facilities within the Wilds neighborhood. I, who approves, I mean, who, who is the Park District requesting that change? And is that a good thing? And should we not be wanting to see parks in, within these kinds of subdivisions?
Yeah, well, thanks for the question. So, just a little bit of background on the, the requirement itself. Within the city's subdivision ordinance, there is a section on. Within the city's subdivision ordinance, there is a section on what's called exactions, which talks about the kind of public benefit to, to subdivisions and one of that being, you know, as the city grows and as the population increases, that puts a strain on the existing park facilities, and so in order to offset that growth and, and, you know, provide for that growth, subdivisions are required to, um, to provide city land. And for the most part, you know, most of the time that, that's, that's public land, I should say, ends up being Park District property. And so there is a process allowance in ordinance that basically allows the city commission to decide what is appropriate in terms of the public land needs. And again, historically speaking, for residential neighborhoods especially, that dedication more often than not has been public park dedication. And so kind of the process is that the applicant goes and meets with the Park District staff, talks to them about what their needs are for the neighborhood. If it's a new area with no parks, sometimes the Park District will say, yeah, actually, we do need a new park here. You know, we'd like, they might work with the applicant on, you know, where it might fit in with their development proposal, for example. However, in a situation such as this, where, you know, everything's kind of already developed around it and there has been previous parkland dedication, as well as a kind of a dedicated, you know, pretty large neighborhood park in the area, the Park District has opted to, you know, they don't want any additional parkland in this area, and so there's an option for payment in lieu, which is basically just a cash payment to the, the governing body in lieu of the, the public land dedication. And so ultimately, it's up to the city commission on what form that takes. If it's, if it should go to the Park District or if there's a different public need, for example, if there's a need for a fire station or something, you know, that could be a consideration by the city commission. And so it is, you know, within your purview to discuss the needs, you know, and provide a recommendation to the city commission if you'd like. So hopefully that provides some context there.
How far away is the park facility in the Wilds?
Well, there's a, a few facilities, I know there's a, a few different trails and things, and I don't know if you'll be able to see it on the map included. Nope, but just to the east, probably two, three blocks to the east is where kind of the main, you know, park facility is located.
So there's a bike trail, it's to the northeast.
Yeah, you can kind of see a bike trail right here.
Big park facility too.
Yep. Yeah. It is probably, you know, fair to say it's regional in nature.
I apologize, John Eunice, I didn't intend on getting up here, but, uh, I developed the Wilds on the south side of Fifty-second Avenue, and again, there is a, a big trail system that runs through the Wilds from the northwest all the way down to the big park system. There's an additional park facility that's going to be built south of this property a little ways. I don't know what the Park District's planning to use those funds for, but if it, if they're using it towards the parks and the Wilds, I think it's well warranted.
Thank you.
Yeah, I understand that, it's a particular philosophy of, of parks. I, I just think it's unfortunate when we don't have smaller opportunities with even benches or, you know, a little bit of, of space for people, because not everybody is going to be going evil even to go several blocks away. If you have little children or if you're elderly and so forth, so I, I realize that that seems to be kind of the philosophy that the Park District uses, but I, I see the ramifications of it and I, I'm not necessarily in favor of it, but this is a decision for the city commission. We could make some kind of a recommendation to them with this if we, if we so chose.
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else? I would take a motion. It has been moved and seconded to approve the application with the five additions and the recommendations from staff. Prior to vote, any other questions?
I would feel remiss if I did not ask if it's possible to make an amendment to include a recommendation that the Park District request not be approved by the city commission. I don't know how an amendment can be made at this point, but I guess that would be a separate vote and then we go back to the main motion. So I would move an amendment to be added to that motion.
And, and I'm sorry for clarification, you're requesting that the
That we recommend that the city commission.
And not be included in the.
Right, that the fee in lieu of debt, of parkland dedication not be approved by the city commission.
Okay.
I don't know that the amendment's going to go anywhere, but I, I would be remiss if I didn't say that, because I think.
I would question whether we have the ability to override the board on what they feel their budget entails and whether they have extra money sitting there for park benches and more trees or more whatever. And there's a tired, separate board that that's all they do is park board, they know what their budgets are. We have no idea how much money they have or don't have, and it's not really.
Unfortunately, I saw the director of the parks, she was here earlier and I think that was a little.
Well, this is only a recommendation to the, to the city commission, which makes that decision, and the park would board, I would imagine, would be at that meeting to argue this.
Can we add that as a comment to the?
It's an amendment, I, I'm making a motion for an amendment.
Okay.
Can, if there's no second, then it dies, but.
John Legley, does Commissioner Guss, who made that motion, would he have to change his original motion?
No, what's currently on the floor is a motion to amend the motion, so as previously stated, if there's a second, then you'd have discussion, call for a question on the amendment. Whether it passes or fails, and then you vote on the underlying.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, because I was getting a little confused there. On the matter of the amendment to what the motion, does anybody wish to second? Seeing none, we will allow that to.
Die.
Yes. So, back to the motion to approve, which has been seconded. Any other further discussion, questions, input? Prior to vote? All those in favor of the application? Say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? Motion passed. See, I'm learning all kinds of new stuff every time, the procedural thing sometimes gets a little twisted. Thank you. All right, so I got, before we even start on this one, the next item is item number nine, non-hearing. Recommendation for Planning Commission Chair to serve as City of West Fargo's alternate member for Metro COG Policy Board. So, I went and looked at the, the rules and their alternate is required to be an elected individual from that same community. I'm not really elected and I am appointed.
I'll have to double check on that. I did talk to, I did talk to their, the director over there and she expressed no concerns with having a planning commission member serve as the alternate.
Yeah, but I just, when, when I read it, it was very specific that the alternate must or should.
Okay.
I don't know if it was must or should, I forget.
You can't get out of this that easy.
We elect our own chair.
I just wanted to see what the heck, you know, the responsibilities were before anything. So, I don't know, that perhaps needs to be clarified.
Yeah, we will certainly clarify that. Maybe just a quick overview or background on this too. So this is, what we're asking for tonight is just a recommendation to the city commission. And so we can, when we take that recommendation forward, if you choose to make that recommendation, we'll do some double checking on, on that question before we, we do so. So I think for purposes of tonight, if you wouldn't mind, I guess, moving forward and taking action and then allowing staff to, to confirm that before, you know, bringing it to city commission. If that makes sense.
So. I, you know.
So move.
And I'm, I'm happy to provide more, more detail here too, I didn't.
Do we need, I mean, do we need a motion if you're going to check the?
Pending confirmation that it's allowed.
Yeah, I think that's a good addition, I, I'll move this recommendation pending confirmation that it's permissible.
Just take note, this is not the COG board, this is the policy.
Policy board with the.
Which is a subcommittee of COG.
Right.
They may not have the stipulation as far as being a elected official on a sub-board, but that would be good for them to find out.
Perhaps, but the way I read it when I looked down.
You're probably right, but I'm, I'm just saying it's po- possible that it's allowable, but we should love to have you on there if they need some money.
Have you served on that?
No, I, no, I wanted to leave that for someone like you to do it.
You talk about signs a lot.
That's. Okay, it's been moved, pending confirmation.
I'll second that if it wasn't secondary.
It has not been, okay, it's been moved and seconded to recommend that the city commission designate the planning zoning commissioner chair as the city alternate member for the Metro COG Policy Board, pending confirmation that's allowed. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Okay. Item number ten, non-hearing, options for future commission discussion and informational meetings.
So maybe just a quick bit of background on this, this is just follow-up from last month's meeting, where there was some discussion from the, the commissioners here as to what's the appropriate venue and how do we have maybe discussions on matters that are not related to a specific application? And so included in your meeting packet is a memorandum that just outlines some potential options. Certainly not exhaustive, but, you know, long story short, there's kind of two options, we can either add something to our current, you know, meeting structure or create some type of a new meeting or new venue for, for having those discussions, should you wish. I think staff's main point here is that regardless of, you know, whatever direction you'd like to go on this, staff's preference would just be that we remain flexible in terms of timing, especially as it relates to, you know, staffing needs, whether there's need, staffing needs to, you know, provide presentations or, you know, research different topics or what have you. Just to, so we can be conscious of that as it relates to the, you know, the other applications that we might have on an agenda at any, at any given month. Also, there was some discussion on potentially, you know, talking about the notification boundary, I think that's how this discussion originally came up. And so staff's suggestion there would be, you know, once that's first established, the proper venue for that discussion, and then perhaps that can be one of the first items discussed. Once that's, that's kind of settled, so. With that, we just wanted to provide the opportunity to, to discuss and staff would be happy to provide, you know, join the discussion as, as needed, so. I'll stop there.
Okay, thanks, good ideas. You know, and the thing regarding the boundaries for notification, the way Malachi presented that information, actually, that, that, just the manner with the visual and the highlights really helped, at least from my perspective, to have a feel for how thorough the communication was for that specific case. And I think one of the things is a little bit of a, a challenge is you may have some situations where the property is positioned such that that three hundred foot or three fifty just misses some portion of, of community, which in, in other cases could be interesting. So I don't know if it's allowable that, that is, you know, minimum notification difference, but then taking into consideration the physical attributes of whatever location is being affected, if that's even an option.
I'd like to see us discuss it over a brown bag, because I think there are some other considerations too, like timing and how people are allowed to respond to that and so forth, and I really don't know that whole process, so. But I appreciate Aaron's point that, you know, you don't want to do these all the time, so you have to do new research and have something ready to present to us, so. I think the notion of some periodic brown bags when we have topics, I would really like to see that, so maybe that's the first issue for us to, to ta- to talk about is whether we're interested and willing to do those. I have some other topics, I'd love to talk about the plan, the two-point-oh. I read it before I joined this commission, I spent six hours on it, I have notes, I have pages of notes and I've never gotten to talk about it to anybody. And I'd kind of like to see where we are with it and what's in there that we may not even remember or know that's in there. But, you know, that's not a rush, and so it's, again, one of those kind of periodic things. So I'm also interested in neighborhoods, that came up last time, and I know that, you know, there's some interest here in how we might, especially with the branding study that came out and indication from people that they, that they want to see their neighborhoods preserved and, you know, what, what's our connection to that, so. I would be in favor of some periodic brown bags. If staff feels you want to start with the, uh, one on the property owners and, and the input into, you know, proposals, I, I'm okay with that, doesn't have to be my first one, but it's fine.
I like the idea of the brown bag also, I mean, kind of keeps it within an hour, doesn't extend these meetings, because
Right.
It can get long enough a lot of times, and I'm sure you guys are tired by, you know, six thirty at night or so.
Although I am impressed with the efficiency of this evening. And it's a, I think it's a.
Self-congratulating there?
No, no, uh, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a awareness of the preparation by all the commissioners, as well as the staff in particular, so. I think that's really helpful that people come in informed to.
Especially if you guys are buying the brown bags.
I'll buy you lunch too with that.
Come on.
Just out of curiosity, would those fall public meeting guidelines for those?
Yeah.
And they're open to the public, you wouldn't have any public comment, I mean.
No action.
No action, it's just the public can sit and listen if they want.
So be limited to discussion on the agenda?
I can't talk about the Chicago Bears coaching changes.
On the agenda, you're the chair.
Do, do we need a motion on that, or are we just, how do you find a date, or what do we do? Timing?
I don't think, we're, we're not looking for a, a motion or anything, but just a general consensus from the group, I guess, on which direction you'd like to go.
I think the general consensus is a good idea, perhaps we can find a date in the future to find one and try it out.
Why don't you guys put some information together when you feel you're ready to have a meeting, throw it out, see the availability, might be the way to go.
Uh, so I noticed we didn't have an agenda item for non-agenda items. Do we have anything that we have to discuss? So the last item would be then adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Nice job, guys, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Aaron, that was a nice summary of how to go about that.
It's Taco Tuesday. I'm going home to have tacos. Well, my wife doesn't always make tacos, but tonight she said yes. She is actually making.
Is this an invite, or are you like a push?
No, no. My wife would get pissed if I brought a bunch of. Little bread.